Perhaps not.
I don't think that's been our practice.
Not necessary? Oh, all right, all right. Well, then we will welcome Vicki Harden Woods and begin the evening. Thank you, Vicki.
You're welcome. Mayor and councilors, tonight we're going to be talking about the housing needs for Salem and Kaiser urban area. This is a partner study to the Economic Opportunities Analysis. So remember, maybe a month ago, we had a joint meeting with Kaiser and Turner and the counties, and we talked about what kind of land supply we might need into the future in order for commercial and industrial land. And tonight, we're going to be talking about what kind of land supply we need related to housing. We have quite a few people here to help answer questions, resources for you. The consultants are going to do about a 15-minute presentation, and then hopefully you'll have lots of questions, and we'll have lots of people here to help answer. First, let me introduce who's here this evening. We have on staff Lisa Anderson Ogilvy, who is our staff planner, who's been working on this project. Say hello, Lisa. And Glenn Gross, who is our planning administrator. And we also have in the audience Andy Wilch, and I see Tori also is here. Andy is with our Housing Authority, so if there are questions related to what they're going to be talking about tonight is first, they're going to talk about what they've discovered. They've looked at what are our needs, what kind of incomes, what kind of demographics do we have, what are our needs going to be? And then they're going to talk about how is that divided up between Salem and Kaiser. So they're going to do the first part, pause, let you ask questions about that, and then they're going to do the second part, and pause, and let you ask questions about that. So we're going to do it in two parts tonight. The other people who are here this evening are the staff and technical people who've been working on this, and that includes Brandon Reich from the county. Brandon, if you could wave, thank you. And Suzanne Duffner, who's with the Council of Governments. Nate Brown, who is here from the city of Kaiser. Steve Volman, with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then also, we have Commissioner Sam Vertano from Marion County as well. So you have quite a few people here listening in, trying to give you some answers if you need them. And so with out further ado, let me introduce Beth Goodman and Bob Parker are going to do the presentation tonight. They are consultants with Eco Northwest. One final note, we have a work session on June 6th scheduled to discuss the Economic Opportunities Analysis, and any follow-up from this could also be discussed at the same time, because both of these studies relate to the land supply for our community into the future. So without going any further, Bob, could you start for us?
Certainly. Thank you, Vicki. Mayor Peterson, councilors, thank you for having us this evening.
Welcome.
As Vicki had indicated, this is going to be a two-part presentation. We're going to start with a summary of housing needs, and then we'll get into the details about what that means by way of land demand for the city of Salem and Kaiser. I wanted to start by saying that this study was sponsored by a technical assistance grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. It is a regional study, so we looked at both Salem and Kaiser and surrounding areas to provide context for our analysis. And that it will hopefully provide the foundation for both of the communities to move forward with updates of their housing elements and addressing some of the issues that we identified in this study. So the first part of this study is about demographics and housing need and how this translates. There's been considerable research done that links the characteristics of current future housing to the characteristics of the population that lives in a community, and I wanted to go through some basic facts that we came up with through this study. Historically, about 40% of the growth in Salem and Kaiser has been due to in-migration. That's people moving from the outside. And one of the challenges that that presents from the standpoint of planning for housing needs is that it's hard to forecast the characteristics of those households, difficult to know exactly who they are. But Marion Polk County grew by over 100,000 people between 2000 and 2008, and 42% of that growth was from in-migration. So some of the key demographic trends of that, one is that population is aging, and through this period, we found that there was lower homeownership after 65 years old and a higher increase or an increase in single-person households. A few statistics here for you. In both of the communities, for both cities, people 45 to 64 were the fastest-growing group since 2000 and accounted for nearly 25% of the population. And according to the State Office of Economic Analysis forecast for Marion Polk Counties, in 2000, there were about 16% of the population was 60 years or older. By 2030, that will be about 22% of the population, or an increase in the two counties of 57,000 persons. So that will have implications for the kind of housing that that particular segment of the population needs. A couple of other things here. One, homeownership by age for the counties, and homeownership tends to increase by age. This is consistent with what we've found in nearly every place that we've done these studies. So in Marion Polk Counties, by 34 years of age for the household, or about 42% of the housing units were owner-occupied. As you get to 55 to 74, you see a peak there, 83% of the households that had householders that were aged 55 to 74 owned a house, and then it begins to decline after age 75, as people either downsize or end up moving to apartments or assisted-living facilities. 72% of the people own housing. So the implication of this, if we're talking about 57,000 new people in the age 60-plus category, is that you'll still continue to see quite a large group of homeowners, but it will create a need for additional assisted-living facilities that the communities will have to plan for over this period. Another significant trend that we're seeing in this region and across the state is the increase in single-person households, and that increased between 1990 and 2008 in Salem for 30% of the households to 32%. Not a big increase, but 30% of the households is a very significant number. Nearly a third of the households are single-person households in Salem. Stable in Kaiser, they've got a little lower rate of single-person households at 23%. Related to that, single-person households increase with age. Up to age 44, you're looking at less than 20% of the households are single-person households. Between 45 and 74, in Salem, that's somewhere between 26 and 38%, and Kaiser, it's somewhere between 21 and 40%. And then as you get up into over 75, for people in Salem, that's 60% of the households are single-person households, and in Kaiser, it's 44%. And then the final trend that we want to call out here is the growth in Latino households in the region over the period, which may increase demand for rental units, and the statistics show tend to have larger household sizes. So in 2008, 18% of the population in both Salem and Kaiser were in Hispanic households, and there's been a tremendous amount of growth in that population in the region over this period. In Salem, it was 314% increase from 6,600 to 27,000 individuals, and Kaiser, obviously a smaller community, 1,200 to about 6,600. So the next conclusion we came up with here was that Salem, both Salem and Kaiser, don't have enough affordable workforce housing. And essentially, what we found, this should be no surprise to anybody, that a household became less affordable over the past decade, particularly ownership products. And the obvious point there is that housing prices increased much faster than income, not only in Salem and Kaiser and Marion Polk Counties, but throughout the country, and that the average sales price for owner-occupied units increased by 55% in Salem and 60% in Kaiser. So what we're looking at here ends up being that for ownership products, we saw a much more rapid increase in cost of housing than incomes, much more rapid. Consistent with what we've seen in other places in the state, rents for renter-occupied units tended to track more or less with the increases in income. So that balance didn't get nearly as imbalanced as it did with ownership products. Some statistics here to underscore that point. The ratio of income to housing value in Salem was 2.4 in 1989. So the cost of a housing unit in 1999, on average, was 2.4 times the household's average income. That increased to 4.5 in 2008. Average sales price went from 69,600 to well over 150,000 for Salem, according to the census. So we're looking at really significant changes in this. And final statistic on that is that cost burden, that is the ratio of income to how much people pay for housing, and cost burden is defined as households that pay more than 30% of their monthly income for housing. Was it 52% for renters in Salem in 2008, 35% for owners, and 42% for all households? So affordability is clearly an issue for significant portions of the community. What that translates to over this 20-year planning horizon is greater demand for affordable housing, lower-cost housing types, and multifamily housing. And so what we're seeing here is growth in populations that may need or prefer multifamily or smaller, low-cost, single-family housing. Those populations, aging populations, minority households, low and moderate income households. And the fact is, is that the region already has a big gap in affordability, and one of the things that we concluded for the Salem MSA, Polk and Marion Counties, was that for households with incomes under 25,000, there's a deficit of nearly 10,000 affordable housing units. So you're building from a base that already has a big deficit, and the, I think, planning challenge for the communities is to find ways to allow opportunities for development of more affordable housing types. So lack of affordable, lower-income and workforce housing. What we're seeing here is for in Salem MSA, 9,700 units deficit for incomes less than 25,000, and then another 8,200 for incomes in the 35,000 to 75,000 range. Another thing that we're seeing here is a lot of commuting. About 1/3 of the workers commuted into the region, and about 1/3 of the people who live here commute outside of the region for work. And then with respect to the housing type that got built over this period, not surprisingly, during the housing boom, we saw a significant portion of those dwellings built in single-family housing types. So in Salem, 73% of the building permits in Salem and Kaiser between 1999 and 2009 issued were for single-family detached units, 3% for duplex, and about 23% were for multifamily So the implications of this are that Salem needs to plan for more multifamily housing over this planning period. So there's a need for increased share of attached and multifamily housing types, need for more affordable housing, and from the city's perspective, your obligation under Goal 10 is to plan for housing that is affordable to all income levels. City doesn't necessarily build big portions of that housing, so you've got to allow for the opportunity for those types to be built. So low-income housing that would be affordable for households that are less than 80% of the area median income, and then workforce housing for working households. And one of the key points here is that multifamily housing location and design end up being important. Where you put that is important both from a community development standpoint, but it's also important from the context of efficiency to those households that are occupying those dwellings. That's the end of part one of this presentation. I want to see if anybody has any questions about the conclusions from the needs analysis part.
Yes, Counselor Clausen, and then Clem, and then Counselor Nanki. Thank you.
And Ms. Woods wanted to say something as well.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to conclude by explaining what the state law requires of us in this regard. So this is a planning study. This is all about land use planning goals for the state. It's about the region working together and identifying how much land we need over time to accommodate the needs of our community. And what we are required to do is to provide a 20-year land supply of our anticipated growth based on the incomes and demographics of our citizens. So we aren't required to provide this housing, but we are required to provide enough land so that the kind of housing that the community needs can be built.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. I have two questions, if I may. The first one is, can we get those stats on paper? It was all really interesting, but they just really glazed over for me after a little while there, and I would, I'd like to see those stats and some charts and some graphs and things like that, because that's so much what develops this position, and that's a huge thing for us going forward, for me to get a full understanding of why we're going this way. I would like that. And the question was, this information is, Vicki, as you mentioned, this is what goes into how we shape our planning going in the future. How is this information blessed by council, for lack of a better word, and then how is it implemented by staff?
Well, I think Bob will conclude by talking about what's next, but the quick answer to that is that this is a regional housing need study, just like the EOA is a regional study. So this would then have to be adopted locally by all of the jurisdictions involved. And what happens is, once it's adopted locally, if there's a need to expand the UGB, then you go through together to make that expansion.
And is it adopted by setting goals of, we want this much more zoned multifamily or this much more zoned single-family in each jurisdiction?
We would have to demonstrate how we can meet the needs. So we would need to express some policies related to how we can meet the needs that are given. So what you see here is we don't have enough land zoned for multifamily housing. That's actually the result of what Bob just told you. And we've been through that here before in Salem. I'm sure Dan Clem and Counselor Nanki both remember having gone through that before, when we had to increase our supply of multifamily land. And essentially, the most common way to do that is to increase the amount of land zoned for it. But there's another component to this, and I don't want to be too light about it. It's not just about having an adequate land supply for us as a community. It's also how do we meet the needs of our community regardless of what the state law says, and that's why you have our housing folks here tonight, because they're another piece of it, because just because you zone the land doesn't mean you're going to get the housing built that you need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Vicki, great segue to my points and questions. We did this 10 years ago, same exact thing. And the push was for multifamily zoned land, believing that if the city zones it, the property owners will build multifamily. They didn't 10 years ago, and I'm not sure they will in the future. But apartment complexes in my ward are running 80 to 85%, meaning a 20 to 15% vacancy. So before I sort of, from what I'm told, so three different apartment complexes. So I'm just trying to get a handle, Bob, on how we say we need more multifamily when we've got a vacancy rate of 15 to 20%.
Well, vacancy rates tend to be cyclical, and it really depends on what's going on with production of units. The way we think about this, which is consistent with our interpretation of state policy, is long-term. And what we're looking at is basic relationships between incomes, demographics, and what households can afford to purchase. So one way to think about this is, if you look at an income distribution, which I don't have right in front of me here, Salem, if we look at the number of households that earn less than $25,000 annually, which might be up to a quarter of the households or more in Salem, then you can go through some very straightforward, basic statistical analysis to, or arithmetic is probably a better way to put it, to evaluate how much they can spend annually and still meet affordability thresholds, spending less than 30% of their income. So $25,000 a year, you're looking at $8,000 approximately. And what we tend to find is that this is pretty consistent throughout the state. The market can't bring ownership product online for that amount of money, but rental units can be affordable for those households. So that's how we tend to think about it, and I'm not surprised you're seeing vacancies in some complexes that there may be. But overall, over this planning period, we're expecting the demand for those housing types to increase.
Yeah, I'm wondering whether they really changed 10 years ago from what you have today in terms of 30,000-foot data. In West Salem, there are five retirement communities, and many of the folks could fit into those income categories that you're talking about, and the housing they need, their housing needs have been met. And so I'm not sure that the data lands on both feet, you know, on the ground when you're talking about people. But I'm concerned about the first slide. I want to make sure we're very careful that our wording or what the data is that we're pursuing, and it talks about growth in Hispanic and Latino households, and then it says an increase in demand for rental units. Is there actually an increase in demand from that segment of our population? It seems like we're assuming that they either want to be or that they should be in rental units, and I want to be careful that we aren't guilty of looking at this poorly or wording it poorly.
Well, the detailed report provides a lot more information, point one on that. Point two is, your point is well taken, and the relationships based on the data that we've looked at indicate that income by far is the strongest determinant of housing choice, far more than ethnicity, far more than household size, all those things. So basically, if we have an income distribution for the city, that can be used as the strongest predictor of what housing needs are. To dig down a little bit further in the data, we found that when you get to second and third-generation Latino households, they tend to get into owner-occupied units earlier than other households do, and so that's also something that I think needs to be factored into this. And again, I would say that the main point there is, you can probably sweep a lot of this other information aside and look at age and income as the biggest predictors of what the community is going to need.
I think we need to be careful about labeling and both how we approach the data. And then the third slide talked about average sales price increased by 55% in Salem. Today, those values aren't holding. So sales price in '06 isn't reality in '11 in terms of what its actual value is or even what people are paying for it. Help me understand how your approach to the analysis has differentiated between what a sale price was a couple of years ago and what the value of the housing is that people are living in now, please.
Well, the approach ends up being, everybody is by now aware of what's going on in the housing market, and a lot of the value that got run up between 2000 and 2006 has evaporated at this point. The long-term trends, I think, the good news is that now housing ownership is more affordable to a lot of households. Households that were priced out of the market in 2006 can now re-enter the market if they've got income. And there's a relationship, I think, that's important for you all to pay attention to between this and your economic development strategy, because those two things go hand in hand in the context of ensuring that you have housing that's affordable to workers, wages that are typical in your community, and ensuring that you actually have some strategies to increase and enhance your employment base. So we definitely consider that. As with all these studies, it ends up being a moving target, so things change as we go through in the data.
Sure. I think if it's sales price alone, I think the data could be flawed, is my comment. And then one of the last slides, I think it's up there now, multifamily housing location and design are important. I have a number of multifamily and city-owned Housing Authority land in West Salem that have no, they have bus stops but no buses. So help me understand, you're not just talking about transit in that last statement. What are you talking about in terms of access to services?
We're talking about proximity to services, retail and other services. We're talking about proximity to schools, proximity to employment areas. So all of those things go hand in hand on that, and I don't think it's the case that all multifamily housing needs to be treated similarly. I think there's a variety of styles and types and price ranges that you see in multifamily housing. There's condos that have been built downtown here that I don't think would fit the affordability criteria for most households in Salem. So again, there's a need for a variety of housing types and a variety of locations. When we begin to look at the lowest-income segments of your community, that's when I think you really want to pay attention to, the location with respect to transit, with respect to the kind of services that those households may need.
Has the local development community or some of the housing associations had a chance to weigh in on your data here? Has anybody had a chance to say, wait a minute, my data shows different than your data? I mean, how empirical is?
Well, our analysis is based off of standard data sources, so we're using census data, we're using data from, Beth can correct me if I'm wrong here, multiple listing service and other sources. We have not engaged the homebuilders group yet. Andy has been advocating on behalf of housing throughout this process, but keep in mind again that this is a regional study, and there'll be the next tier down where both Salem and Kaiser begin to look at the results and integrate those into your policy choices about how you want to move forward with the information.
Thank you.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Following up on the 55% increase in a sales price in Salem and 60% in Kaiser is the difference, or the increase in Kaiser above Salem due to the minimal land that's available to them? Or how did we come about that difference?
Well, it's a simple statistic. I would not be willing to identify a causal factor on that. I think there's been some anecdotal evidence that would suggest that. There's certainly been a number of people who suggested that Kaiser is land-constrained and that not as much housing got developed there as it might have if they had more land. There's probably a variety of factors that went into that. It's close enough that I would say it may not be statistically valid as a trend.
Okay. And then in regards to those percentages, you just take a look at what was now at the time, and then that's where your 55% increase came from?
No, we were looking at--
Kind of respected Counselor Clem's question. Whereas they may have, they dip and they rise, you just basically said, this is what they are right now, and that's what was incorporated into the report?
We look at long-term trends. So in the detailed report, we looked at data from 2000, 2005, and 2008 on this. So you begin to see cycles in this, and the one thing that you can probably count on over the planning period you're going to go through the next 20 years is you're going to have another one or two business cycles that occur, and so you'll see that cycle within that, and that'll both affect the development trends within the community, how much housing gets built, and also affect incomes and other things. Again, we're taking a long-term view of this, and really, as Vicki had suggested, from the standpoint of the state, your obligation is to identify your housing needs and then to plan to accommodate those needs. The city can't make the private sector build housing. They're going to build to demand, but the city can plan for need.
Follow-up, if I may, or a different question?
Yes, go ahead.
On the one slide, it talked about incommuting by outlying area workers. Do you consider city limits or UGB, outlining of which boundary?
I believe those statistics were people commuting into Salem by the city limit.
It was, we looked at the Marion and Polk Counties both, and looked within Marion and Polk Counties where people commuted, and it was city limits, because that census data. So it's city limits, people commuting into Salem, people commuting into Kaiser.
I just think about two largely populated areas on either end of town and how much that may impact the 30% of the people come from outside. Well, that's 30% of our population that actually isn't in the city limits, but I think that does it. Other than that, just in regards to Smurfs, which was the multifamily to do-ha a decade ago. Uh-- ago, that housing location for multifamily is very critical because we said we want to put it here, here, here. And people have differing opinions of multifamily housing. And there was significant resistance a lot of times to put it into certain areas. So if we go about that again, I'm sure that will be at the forefront again.
Counselor Bennett, did you have a comment?
I'll wait until they're done.
Okay, Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm just curious, on your third slide, where you indicate that 52%, Salem has 52% of renters and Kaiser 36% of renters, do you have any statistics on the renters, multifamily versus single-family? Because it seems like we're talking about, when we talk about rentals, the first thing that comes up is apartments. And I see a lot of single-family homes coming for rent in my neighborhood. People are moving out, maybe they can afford something bigger. So has that, is that a factor in any of this?
Yes, indeed it is. And your point is exactly right, which is rental housing types can be any housing type that exists within your community. And there's statistics in the report. If you want to hear some, I'm sure Beth can-
It doesn't differentiate cost burden by housing type.
Well, it doesn't differentiate cost burden, but it does differentiate the number of rental units that are single-family detached versus townhomes attached versus apartments. I think that was the question.
And Counselor, that 52% is it's 52% of renters pay more for housing than a third of their income. So it's not 52% are renting.
Could you please repeat that, Vicki?
It's, what that statistic was that they showed you was that of the renters in Salem, 52% of them pay more for housing than a third of their income, which is a standard measure of if you have to pay more than you can afford. So that's a pretty significant number to absorb.
Okay. Boy, this slide really needs to be corrected to say that. I worry when something like this goes out and we take it home and or take it to our offices and we save it, and then we go back to look at it and we say, oh, 52% of the people in Salem are renters.
It's the cost burden part of that that probably needs to be explained.
If you could put some more verbiage in that, okay. I have a comment. And I realize, thank you for your report, and I realize what you're doing is reporting back to us the statistics and the information that you found from your research. I just want to be very clear that we don't think that only people who, let me rephrase this, we should not start thinking that because someone is low-income that they should not be able to buy a home. We know across the nation that homeownership builds stable communities, it builds stable families. So I want to be really careful, and particularly as we're talking about the low-income Hispanic or Latino families. I have met recently with leaders in the Latino community, and one of my very pointed questions was, what kind of housing are they looking for? And they said right away, the moment that they become stable enough in their employment that they can afford and be able to buy a home, that's their dream. It can be very small, it can have a very small yard, but their dream is not to work hard so that they can be a renter in an apartment complex. I just want to get that out there. I think we need to be thinking about that. We talked about it earlier, about, you know, our neighborhoods in the North Salem area. We don't want to get those so spruced up, gentrified, that we lose the mix in the population in those neighborhoods and other parts of the city as well. So I think that we have an opportunity here for those who can think of how to create housing that does provide that family stability experience in an affordable price range. So, excuse me, but that's a very important issue for, I think, for most of us on the council. Counselor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. That was my point earlier as well, and this belief that if you create apartments, they will come, or that you're providing some relief. 10 years later, I'm here to say, even with the addition of apartments, I don't know that the data has changed, the results have changed that much. So this whole idea that we have to build apartments is one that I'm not crazy about. But I think, I think we definitely need more land for housing, and we need more opportunities for low-income workforce.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Okay, all good points. And the data that we've looked at are consistent and conclusive on that point, which is people have a very strong preference for ownership products if they can afford them. And I think the main point that we're trying to make is there are households in Salem and will continue to be households in Salem that can't afford ownership products. And that's something we think you should pay attention to. Onto part two of this. So let's talk about the implications of this from a planning standpoint. And basically, the way we work this is everything derives from your population growth estimate. And that gets then translated into the number of dwelling units that you will need and then allocated out to housing types, which then translates into the number of acres that you will need to plan for by housing type over the planning horizon. So the first thing is how much population growth. And the numbers we've been working with, which are not coordinated with the county, these numbers came out of the county process and out of technical work that county staff had done out of that process, but have not been adopted by the county or Salem and Kaiser, basically indicate that we're expecting, for the UGB, the number is fixed. It's been adopted, 67,783 new people over this 2012 to 2032 planning horizon. About, somewhere around the order of 80% of that growth is going to end up in Salem. So the growth increment that we've been working with in this study, this regional study, is for Salem to grow by approximately 55,000 people and for Kaiser to grow by approximately 12,000 people.
Bob, if I could just clarify for the council. So what this is about is the number that you see up there, the 2032 population for the Salem-Kaiser UGB, that 307,000, is a number that was a coordinated number with the county. And you had that, oh, maybe a year or maybe even two years ago, actually came to you and said, this is what the county and the cities have agreed on is the growth for the Salem-Kaiser UGB. But what never happened was, we didn't divide that up between Salem and Kaiser. So there was an assumption, there was work done at that time that built some assumptions into how that might be divided up, and that's what's been used here. But it makes a difference because the way that gets divided up shows who needs what kind of land.
And the arithmetic's pretty easy on that. If you have less population, you'll need less land. And if you have more population, you will need more land. How much housing will Salem need? Approximately 22,000 units to accommodate those 55,000 people. And of that, basically, the determination was that 60% of that needed housing is single-family detached, 1,100 units, 5% are single-family attached types, and 35%. These numbers are consistent with the analysis that was done 10 years ago. Same assumption, same conclusion. So how much land does that translate into? That translates into about 3,325 acres over the planning period. And as you might expect, the biggest need is for single-family detached housing. So the majority of land that's going to be consumed for housing over this planning period will be for single-family detached. As a function of density, you can fit a lot more multifamily dwelling units on a lot less land. So the city will, by its nature, need to plan for less land for those housing types. And so we've got 3,325 acres that are needed. How much land does the city have? City has about 5,700 acres. About the vast majority of land that is vacant within your UGB, based on the inventory that was conducted by the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments, is in single-family designations. So the city right now has 207 acres in multifamily designations and 208 acres in mixed-use designations. So the conclusion of that is that you've got a surplus of lands that are in the single-family planned designations and a deficit, 220-acre deficit for multifamily. And we basically didn't make a determination on the mixed-use at this point. We assumed that 20% of that mixed-use land would get used for housing, although the city could adopt standards that would require more housing to be built on that. The state rules are pretty clear that you've got to have what they call clear and objective standards for development. Otherwise, you can't actually count the capacity of that land against your land supply. So essentially, what we conclude here again is Salem lacks sufficient land for multifamily housing in the multifamily or the mixed-use designations. For Kaiser, and we think it's important for you to understand where Kaiser stands on this, Kaiser has a deficit in all of the categories. Again, they're planning for 13,000 new people. In Kaiser, they've got a deficit of 344 acres, low-density residential, 52 acres of medium and 43 acres of medium-high-density residential. And so if Kaiser moves forward with the conclusions, as they stand here, they're going to need to expand their UGB by about 440 acres for housing on top of the amount that we talked about for, for the economic component. So the questions for Salem in terms of next steps are, how do you take this information and integrate it into local policy? The study, which will be done by May 31st, so those who want to see the detailed statistics will have well over 100 pages of information to sort through. And we, while we've drawn conclusions on this based on some of the fundamental relationships, there is ample opportunity for this body to continue talking about the implications and what that means by way of housing policy for the city of Salem. So the question here is how to address the multifamily land deficit. Here's some ideas for you. Concentrate multifamily along corridors and centers. This is not unique. It's probably something that's been talked about over the years here. Identifier is for potential redesignation. You've got a surplus of low-density land, so it is conceivable that you could choose to redesignate some of that. Evaluate other options. You've got a number of urban renewal districts that might be candidates for housing and so on. And then the more challenging part of this is how do you encourage the development of lower-cost housing in all areas, including low-density areas? That's been something that nearly every community in the state has struggled with. It's something that the housing market has not responded to very well, and it will continue to be a challenge for you. So if the community does want to provide homeownership opportunities for lower-income households, or what we would call in many instances, workforce households, households that are making between 80 and 120% of the area median income, in the recent past, those households have been priced out of the market. So are there things that the city can do either by way of reducing, there's not a whole lot of options that you have, by the way, in terms of reducing the cost of development because you can only work on one side of it, which is the land side of it. So things that you can do on the land side would be things to pay attention to, and the kinds of things that cities have looked at end up being infrastructure-based strategies, land-based strategies. We're working in Newport, they're looking at doing some land banking down there right now is one of their options. But it is a challenge, and it will continue to be a challenge. Couple of options that we talked about with the technical advisory committee on this one was consider allowing accessory dwelling units. Our experience with accessory dwelling units has been, they exist in your community, and if nothing else, a policy to allow them will acknowledge that they exist and provide another housing opportunity. The other thing we found is that in places where that policy exists, it has not been very effective in creating a lot of additional housing units. And then other options that you might look at. And then, of course, regional coordination, starting with agreeing on a population figure and then working with your jurisdictional partners to coordinate on other policy matters that might be related to infrastructure or other issues.
The accessory housing, accessory dwelling units are like mother-in-law apartments. That's what that term means. And what may happen next is the city of Kaiser is anxious to move forward with this. Salem is not under any mandate to adopt either a local EOA or a local housing needs analysis. But the city of Kaiser is anxious to move forward and likely will settle on what they think their population will be, what they think their housing needs will be, and what they think their economic land needs will be. And will adopt that. And if we are to move together forward in expanding the UGB or addressing that, then we will have to take some action of some kind in order to facilitate that.
Are there any further questions? Let me see, oh, excuse me, Counselor Clem and then Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bob, two assumptions that we went by pretty quick. And given that the time is running late, I'm just hoping that maybe staff can help us understand this maybe later on. One assumption is that 35% of the growth in housing that will be needed will need to be multifamily. And correspondingly, 60% will be single-family detached and 5% single-family. Is that a planning axiom? Is that a norm for Oregon? Where do we get those percentages on all those types?
Those percentages came out of the housing needs analysis we conducted. So as we went through and looked at all the various pieces of information, income, age, the existing housing stock in your community, that was the conclusion.
Based on income?
Based on income, age of householders, based on affordability and those factors. The one point I would make on that would be that just not all multifamily housing is rental types of housing and not all single-family housing is ownership housing. And it's pretty easy to get tenure confused with the housing type. But that is indeed the assumption that is reflected in this, the need determination that we made out of the analysis that we conducted.
You said that was what we used 10 years ago, too. Or you referenced that that hasn't changed at all.
It was about the same result 10 years ago. So it's based on demographics and income, and they project that ahead and determine what they think we'll need as a community.
Yeah, I'm just anxious to really prosecute the question about ownership. Types of housing is one thing, but I think what the mayor was talking about is we really want to see folks, regardless of size, have more ownership as opposed to. The other assumption is that Kaiser gets 22, or that Salem gets 22,000 of the 27,000. Why is that? Why isn't Kaiser need 10,000 acres as opposed to 5? What based that assumption?
That's driven completely by the population allocation between the two communities. And as I said, that, those numbers are numbers that we had worked with the county on, that the county had done. I'm not going to explain this if you want more detail. County staff can provide more detail on where those numbers came from. So I think that's a determination that has to be, well, I know it's a determination that if Kaiser wants to move forward with the UGB expansion, as Vicki had said a moment ago, that will need to be adopted by at least Kaiser and probably Salem. You're going to have to agree on what that number is.
Okay, we haven't gone through that process.
No, no.
Okay. And my last question is, in terms of the 5,700 acres, how much residential buildable land is in the UGB? It shows that Salem has 5,700 acres. What about large lots? Were there assumptions that those large lots would accommodate more homes, that people would want to partition those? And why did we grab land that's already in the property owner's viewpoint being used by them?
Well, we had quite a bit of discussion at the TAC level on that. And part of that ends up being a determination of land efficiency and something that I think most jurisdictions struggle with. And I think it's something that the city of Salem probably should have more discussion around, which is to what extent, regardless of the lot size, do you want to encourage infill in pre-existing neighborhoods? And I will tell you that this has caused a lot of problems in other communities, and it is something that I would encourage council to have some deep discussions about.
And we've had some property owners that have caused those discussions. It's no different here.
Just so you know, though, it's not just a matter of, we don't think this land will be used at a higher density. There are some state requirements that we have to look seriously at how we can deal with infill. You know, we have a UGB, and part of our obligation is to use that land efficiently. So we have to balance, you know, what we see as the future, but also what we can affect and what might change.
Yeah, I just don't want us to lose sense of reality. Property owners do what they want with their property. Property owners do what they want with their property. When you've got 15 to 20 percent vacancy rate, it's hard to say I need more multifamily. So, okay, there's what the state wants, and then there's reality. Thank you.
The final point I would make on your comments is if we've done our job well, the report should describe in detail how we came to the conclusion about the determination of that mix.
You will be getting that report before that June 6th date.
Oh, absolutely. We'll need it before then.
You will.
Thank you. Okay, good. All right. Are there any further questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Councilor Clausen.
I have a plethora of questions, but I'm not going to ask them now. I think that, I mean, I have, I'm feeling heartache on this, and I think it's because I don't have the data to help me understand and put it into context. And if we're looking at a May 31st date, is that what I heard?
Yes.
For the report, and we've got a June 6th economic with Kaiser, whatever we call it, I'm wondering if it's not appropriate that we somehow pull together a task force or something where we get a few of us and maybe a couple of key community members to really understand this, because I think it's really important that we get the public side of this. My understanding is that the committee that has been doing this study has not included any public. It's been all government employees. And not that there's anything wrong with that, because the government people are the experts on this. But I think that it's valuable for us to have a real good in-depth understanding so that we, as council, can have the citizen side and the employee side really coming together and making sure everybody's on the same page with this. So I don't know how we go about doing that or what we want to do, because that's going to be a one-week timeframe. We're talking about reading a 100-page document and trying to parse through.
If that's the sense of the council as a whole, let us do a little noodling of that and come back to you with a proposal. I don't want to give up that June 6th date because it's so hard to get those work sessions, but it may be that we could do that as an introductory piece and then have a second work session that could, and we could put together a subcommittee of some time between now, and then we'd get a report to help make that happen, if that's the sense of the council as a whole.
Yeah, and my thought is maybe that group could, you know, get that report day one it comes out and then get together once before the June 6th and have a preliminary conversation, and then, like you said, maybe move forward.
And there may be some elements of that report that we could release ahead of time, some of the data and that kind of thing that isn't likely to change. We may be able to get some of that also. So we'll see what we can do to get that put together. If that's the sense of the council, we'll come back with a proposal on that.
Our intent is to have a draft of the report available probably sometime next week.
Okay.
And I don't see any reason why that couldn't be circulated to staff. The other point I would make on it is, like the EOA, this is a regional study. It's not going to be a land use action, so in that context, it is non-binding in some respects. It's, and the intent here is to provide foundational information for the two jurisdictions to begin to have local policy dialogues, and our hope is that it does that.
Right, and I think if, I just, when I hear suggestions of changing existing zoning from single-family and multifamily and things like that, that's going to potentially create some uproars around town. And the more we look at it, I think the better to understand what we're doing there.
Okay, Councilor Dickey?
Thank you. Yeah, in anticipation of getting the report, I have a question very similar to Councilor Clem, so I just want to have a little understanding so when I get that report, I can have some context. The numbers that you came up with, the formula and assumptions that you used to determine how many units of which type we would need, that is unique to our area. You would use a different set of assumptions for other areas in the state. I just want to make sure we're not, are we, is every, would any other community be judged by the same assumptions?
No, the analysis is unique to Salem. Our conclusions for Kaiser are different, and this analysis was based on the information that we gathered. It was, I guess, in some respects, an anomaly that we came to the same conclusion, because Beth and I didn't actually see the 2000 study until late in, we actually didn't go back and review it until late in our process and basically derived the same conclusion from the data that we looked at that was much more recent than that previous study. But it is not standardized across the state. It is a local determination in need based on your local characteristics.
So theoretically, if we wanted to make some policy decisions to go in a different direction, we'd have to put in a different set of assumptions and to come up with a different result.
Yeah, the assumptions are the easy part. The, making sure that you have substantial evidence to support those assumptions is the part that's important for the city. So reasonable people can draw different conclusions from the data and often do, but I think from the state's perspective, they're going to be looking at, do you have evidence in the analysis that supports your conclusions?
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll close our work session and give everyone a moment to adjust. I know there are several people here who've been waiting for the city council meeting to begin, and that will happen very shortly.
We're going to call the Housing Authority to order if you can all, if you can all take your seats, appreciate it, and have the city recorder do the roll call.
Commissioner Tesler?
Present.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Clausen?
She was here.
Commissioner Clausen?
She's in back.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Cannon is absent. Commissioner Clem?
Here.
Commissioner Barco?
Here.
And Chair Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Cannon is here.
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Cannon, since you're up here in front, why don't you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I would be the leader. By pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is public comment. I don't have anyone listed. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Housing Authority? All righty. Councilor Nanki, could you move the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Some of.
Okay, Tesler seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And what have we got? No resolution, no actual, we have an information report, though. Andy, do you want to highlight anything out of your report before we adjourn?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Andy Wilch, Administrator of Salem Housing Authority, wanted to point out really quickly, is that on? Is that working?
Yeah.
Very good. Wanted to point out really quickly something from the program management report as it relates to veteran administration, supportive housing, BASH housing. As you know, the Housing Authority applied for and received 25 BASH vouchers. We're working actively with a new VA staff member in Salem to help put veterans, homeless veterans, into secure and sanitary safe housing. The VA provides wraparound services to serve them. We house them. In the report, I provided a small demographic profile, and primarily, single males, but I wanted to point out that there are four families with a veteran male of household, head of household. And so, you know, we're, that is the face of homeless veterans. It's not just single males. It's women, it's families. And so we're really pleased to be leasing those units up and helping people to get into housing. I had a fine article that Commissioner Tesler just gave me from David Brooks about veterans' housing and how the program's working and so forth, and I don't know the source of that document, but it might be something that if everybody took a look at, you might kind of see how we're fitting into a broader national effort. I do have a couple other things that I might really quickly. Wanted to update you on the Parkway state application. We submitted on the 15th of April. It's being processed and reviewed. We've had a whole cadre of staff folks come out to Parkway to inspect and ascertain whether or not, we've identified all of the physical limitations of the property and whether we have a plan to address them. They were out last week, and we think that they went away happy, and that's good news. And we will know more, of course, the end of July, early August. On the federal budget, as you know, on the 11th of April, the federal budget for 2011 was finally adopted and passed. There are some fairly heavy cuts that housing authorities across the country will bear. There was a 15 percent reduction to the Section 8 administration fees. There was a 20 percent reduction to the capital fund, and there was a 5 percent reduction to public housing operating. So there clearly are impacts to the Salem Housing Authority. We haven't gotten the word all the way down from Housing and Urban Development exactly what 15 percent means to them, because there is some administrative dollars that they take off the top. So 15 percent of what is kind of the question we have lingering there, and I guess we'll know soon enough, which brings me to a reminder about commission work session on the 31st of May at the Anderson Rooms and best-laid plans. We keep laying out a course of education and communication with you all, and then something comes up, which I think is the Housing Authority business. And so I think at this point, we probably will know more about the financial impacts on the agency, and I would suggest that that's probably a timely subject to discuss on the 31st. And the last thing, and then I'm going to breathe. Commissioner Barco is here tonight. I know that he often has other conflicts and may not be here, so I want to take the opportunity to acknowledge Commissioner, Mr. Robert Barco. He's a commissioner for the agency. He's a resident advisor as a public housing resident. He's a member of the Housing Advisory Committee. And finally, and I believe this to be true, he's a committed community member who's provided a lot of his time to us. And so if this is his last meeting, I just wanted to acknowledge his effort and his commitment and say thank you for everything you've done.
Yes, thank you very much. Any words, parting words? Are you actually leaving, Commissioner Barco?
Yeah, I'll be moving out of state. I'm hoping to be here for next month's meeting, though.
Well, thank you very much. You've been a great addition to the commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Dickey. Thanks, and thank you, Andy, for your report. I just wanted to point out that the Salem Housing Authority is now on Facebook as you put in your report.
Yes.
I think that's a great way to reach a demographic that sometimes we aren't able to reach by traditional means of communication and fairly inexpensive, so you can like the Salem Housing Authority on Facebook.
Any further comments? Anything further, Andy?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, fine. We have no special orders of business, no unfinished business, no news business. Without objection, I'll adjourn the Housing Authority.
Will the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Clausen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Cannon?
Yes.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here.
Okay. Our first item on the agenda is reports of boards, commissions, committees. Is there anyone here to provide any of those reports? Seeing that no one is here for that, we'll go to public comment. Are there any people signed up for public comment? I don't see. We're done with that part, all right. And the consent calendar. Board Member Bennett, would you please make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, will you approve the consent calendar?
It was moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Nanki to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Do any of the board members have questions or comments regarding the information item that is in your packet? Okay, if not, we'll move on. I see that there are no special orders of business, public hearings, or new business. Since there are no further items to come before us, we are adjourned.
I realized you were in the dark there.
Yeah, we are. I wondered about that. The city council meeting of May 9th, 2011 is now in session. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Bennett?
Here.
Councilor Tesler? She's in the room somewhere. Councilor Nanki?
Here.
Councilor Clausen?
Here.
Councilor Dickey?
Here.
Councilor Thomas?
Here.
Councilor Cannon?
Yes.
Councilor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. We have two proclamations this evening, and I have two city councilors who are going to be presenting these proclamations. The first one is for the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association. Councilor Cannon, will you please come forward and do your duty?
See the light?
There you are.
Where's the light?
Right over there, I think.
Up on the wall.
Up on the wall.
Up on the wall. Gentlemen, would you like to join me? I'm sorry, not all the gentlemen, are they?
As the chair, would you like to introduce your guests?
I certainly would, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm sort of new to the neighborhood association. I had an opportunity to be a liaison there many years ago, and have been fortunate enough that it's passed here to serve as the chair. But when I got there, this lady sort of took me under her wing. She is our absolute perfect secretary for the neighborhood association. Unfortunately, her husband is our vice chair, could be here tonight, but Melva Ludwig, and our land use chair is Evan White, and I'm Alan Alexander.
Ken Archibald.
Well, the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association is the same age as I am. They're 35 years old. And I thought that that was appropriate to point that out this evening. And my other councilmen don't necessarily agree with that statement. But we have a proclamation tonight, which I'm very, very, very pleased to read. Just as a sidelight, if any of you want to go to a neighborhood association where there's always people there and there's always discussion, don't hesitate to go to Shirley School on the third Thursday every month. The chairs are kind of diminutive, but since it is a great school, but it's a wonderful spot and a great neighborhood association. So, on behalf of the mayor of the city of Salem, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the people of Salem, Oregon, recognize the unique and significant differences in the various parts of our city. Whereas the members of the Salem City Council recognize the importance of good communication with all of its citizens. Whereas the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association was recognized by the Salem City Council in 1976 as the Salem Neighborhood Association. And whereas the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association has served its neighbors and the Salem community as a whole for the past 35 years. And therefore, on behalf of the mayor of the city of Salem, I do hereby proclaim 2011 as the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association's 35th anniversary, and invite the entire community to join me in recognizing and applauding the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association on this special occasion, and wishing it the best and continued success in the representation of its neighbors and its contributions to the citizens of Salem this ninth day of May 2011. You should be very pleased and very proud. So, it'll be great. It should be a great meeting, with treats even.
All right.
And they have moved the location of the meeting. It used to be at Morningside Elementary way back when, then it moved to Leslie Middle School. Now, it's being held in the Sustainable Fairview or Pringle Creek Community Painters Hall down at the lower end Access Office Strong Road off of Fairview Industrial Drive. In case anyone gets lost trying to find it, Madrona, take a ride on a Fairview Industrial, first ride and then a first ride again. With that, I shall read said proclamation. Whereas, the people of Salem, Oregon, recognize the unique and significant differences in the various parts of our city. And, whereas, the members of the Salem City Council recognize and understand that neighbors working together can be an effective and healthy influence on the quality of life in our community. And whereas, the Morningside Neighborhood Association was recognized by the Salem City Council in 1976 as the Salem Neighborhood Association. And whereas, the mayor and city council wish to join the people of the Morningside Neighborhood in celebrating the 35th anniversary of Morningside Neighborhood Association now there. For I, Brad Nanki, on behalf of Anna Peterson, Mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim 2011 as Morningside Neighborhood Association's 35th anniversary and invite the entire community to join me in recognizing and applauding the Morningside Neighborhood Association on this special occasion and wishing it the best for continued success in the representation of its neighbors and its contributions to the citizens of Salem dated this 9th day of May 2011. We'd also like to invite all of them to attend the meeting on Thursday night. And it's kind of confusing to some people, anyone who lives inside of the Morningside Neighborhood Association boundaries is automatically a member. So, if any of you live in those boundaries that are here today, this goes out to you as well as an invite to attend your annual meeting this coming Thursday at 7:00. So, with that, I shall deliver this to you with a heartfelt round of applause to the Morningside Neighborhood Association who's been so vigilant in issues of...
Thank you very much, Counselor Nanki. That was well done. Both of the neighborhood associations have added tremendously to our community and I applaud and thank the members and volunteers for coming tonight and for your years of good service to the city and to the people of your community. Thank you very much. Okay. With the council's indulgence, I'd like to introduce a special guest and ask him to come forward. His name is Kelly Beard and I believe Kelly is here...
Is she?
Oh, wait a moment.
I'm sorry, it's a different person.
Just a moment, I think that we're mixed up here.
I think it's the young man here and if you could just come to the podium and maybe you can give your name and address.
I'm so sorry.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Hayden Muse and I am a student in North Salem High School. You guys might remember me. I came here with the cranes and I said, you know, "Don't do drugs, do cranes." That was my little spiel last time. But, yeah, I was here on behalf of Youth Council and Teen Action Team. And we've been working with the community to help Japan relief for the earthquake and tsunami and the tragedies they just had. And we are currently passing out bracelets. Each of the council members will receive one. And a crane, the cranes, we have been making and we are selling the cranes and the bracelets for $2 and all the proceeds are going to go to our sister city in Kawagoi. So, we're here today to have your blessing and to have your support in our efforts to help Japan as a student movement and also as a community. Five high schools in Marion County have been selling these bracelets, selling these cranes in order to try to come together as a conglomerate and help. And we'd really appreciate it if this upcoming Memorial Weekend, on Friday, if we could have a place to hang these cranes. We have over 4,000 currently that we have chained together. And we would like to display this symbolism of togetherness in our community. And we've thought maybe the rotunda and the Capitol, we don't know, but we are looking forward to you guys maybe giving us a place to display these cranes and to display the community's outreach towards Japan. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to the art teacher at North, Ms. Narcus.
Hi, I'm Berg Narcus and I just want to explain a little bit about the relationship we have at North Salem High School. For 25 years, our sister school has been Kawagoi. And this year, our team of students, they alternate. Japanese students comes here and the next year, our students go there. Not only that, we are, of course, Kawagoi is our sister city. This year, our students heard that because of the tsunami, because of the nuclear reactor problem, that they would not be able to go over. And the more that happened, our students, we have Japanese exchange students right now and they were raising money. So, the whole school has gotten behind doing these cranes. And with 2,000 students, we already have 4,000 cranes made. We are having students put a name on each crane that they sell for a dollar. Then, we retain that crane if we can and we are tying them together in long chains. The one thing I want to say also is, I'm a business owner too. We own Elstar Framing and Fine Art and I know that Salem is significantly impacted by the Japanese commerce that we have here. So, I think that from a school point of view, but also a business point of view, I think this is a tremendous statement. What we are trying to do is raise money for giving to Kawagoi the high schools so that they in turn can do something for the children over in the northern part or wherever. The reason our students cannot go is because we found out that their families that were going to be housing them are housing the families that have no homes. And so, it's significant for us.
Thank you so much. And I just applaud both of you and all of the students who have been working so hard and so generously with their time and their talent to make the cranes. They're beautiful and to come and carry this message to us. So, thank you so very much. We appreciate you being here this evening.
All we need to do is have that date, Memorial Day for us.
The Memorial Day.
We need to know that we can put them up in the city. Because they're paper, if it rains, we just want to make sure that you approve that for us.
I see. Do you have a spot suggested yet?
Well, we know that if we put it in front of North Salem High School, there won't be many people that go by 14th Street and see them on our trees.
Mayor, we can, on staff, we can find a spot and get back to you. We'll get back to you.
We would like that help from you.
Okay, okay. Fine, fine. We would be honored to have the cranes here in Salem. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being with us. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next agenda item is the reports of boards, commissions, committees, presentations by outside agencies. And tonight, Kelly Beard of the SSAB, that's our Social Services Advisory Board member, is here to introduce Ron Hayes, who's the director of the Marion Polk Food Share. So, Kelly, thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate you being with us.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and City Council. My name is Kelly Beard and I work at Willamette Valley Hospice at 1015 3rd Street in West Salem in Councilman Clem's district. As a member of the Social Services Advisory Board, I want to thank the council for their continued financial support of the social services in our community. I am pleased to be able to introduce one of the contractors that have benefited from your support, as well as Willamette Valley Hospice has benefited from Marion Polk Food Share. They provide emergency food boxes for our patients and families when they are in need. It is my pleasure to introduce Executive Director of Marion Polk Food Share, Ron Hayes.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Hayes. It's a pleasure to have you with us tonight.
It's good to be here. I'm Ron Hayes, Marion Polk Food Share, 1660 Salem Industrial Drive. I think this is about my fifth or sixth presentation I've done here to the council and I have not worked myself out of a job yet, so I need your help more. It seems like it's gone the wrong way with the last recessions that we're in and the like. This last year, Marion Polk Food Share distributed in the city of Salem $4.5 million worth of food in 2010. That's the value of the food. That's huge. But, we're only part of the story, I think. If you look beyond it, we're only part of the emergency food system that's in our area. We also have food stamps, which also provides a lot of food to our people in our area and our need. And this last year, in Marion County, $109 million was put out in Marion County. I don't have the exact figures for Salem, but for the county, it was $109 million in food stamps that went out to our area residents. It's been a challenging time for many of our residents and the issue really follows employment. The real issue is what we're seeing is a result of employment. I don't want to dwell on those. You've gotten figures and the like. This last year, we also built a kitchen with the help of the city of Salem. It's getting ready to be utilized nicely. If you haven't had a chance to see it, you should come out. It's our communities and you should be, come out, take a look and see it. What we're looking at is some really interesting challenges that we're facing still ahead of us. We're looking at the Salem Kaiser Education System with the school, with the cutbacks that they're having to do. The elimination of the after-school programs will result in if we don't work outside of the schools to save those, we'll have 60,000 meals that kids were getting in those programs will be going away. We're also facing cutbacks in the federal level, both from the FEMA funds, dollars and cents that are cut at the federal level. And we still don't know what's going to happen with other dollars. The farm bill is, USDA farm bill, is what funds both the emergency food we receive from the, through the state, coming down to the feds, through USDA, as well as provides the food stamps. And that's going up for reauthorization in 2012. So, we want to keep our eye on that and you'll want to keep your eye on that because that will have impact on us here in Salem. The other thing I want to talk about a little bit is also, what also is affecting us. Everybody's aware of just the macro aspects of food. We have a lot of macro aspects of food where we aren't seeing the food production we used to see in this particular area. We're even seeing challenges with our food providers, having challenges with, like Truitt's are laying off some people and cutting back in that respect. One of the things about food is that people don't realize that peak oil is affecting our food for everybody. 19% of domestic use of oil is in the production of food or in the transportation or storage of food. And as we see the increases of oil and gasoline and fuel prices, we're seeing the corresponding aspect of increases of food. That affects us, but affects all of our citizens within that context. So, my leg's blinking here and I thank you for the support that the city has given us. It's held true and steady for us and we appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hayes. We really do appreciate the work you do. We know how vitally important it is for our community. Are there questions for Mr. Hayes? Yes, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Ron. I actually helped at the Comcast Cares Day weekend or so ago and we planted edible landscaping around the Food Share. They're actually looking at getting several of their neighbors to try to actually make an edible street in Salem and hopefully, at some point in time, we could make an edible Salem, is how they describe it. The community kitchen is great, but in talking with your people, there was another need that was apparent. My wife came and helped that day and she was actually taking these four-foot-by-four-foot boxes of frozen beans and broccoli cauliflower and packaging them down into two-pound bags. Apparently, you can get more of that food, but you don't have anybody to bag it up.
Well, yeah. And one of the things we've put together before the city is a proposal for grant funding that we're actually going to be putting in some equipment that will help us move that, still with volunteers, to package a lot faster. So, that's going to be coming before the city shortly.
But, if we could get several businesses or even a group from the city of Salem of, you know, six, eight, a dozen people to bag down, that would increase the ability to provide food for the community.
Tremendously, tremendously.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you so much.
And how can they get hold of you? That's always the most critical piece.
Oh, that's a good idea. Do tell.
503-581-3855 or marionpolkfoodshare.org either way.
All right. Excellent. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming tonight. Okay. Our next item agenda is public comment and I'd like to call forth first, please, Mike Erdman.
Thank you, Mike Erdman with the Home Builders Association of Marion Polk Counties, 385 Taylor Street Northeast. And I wasn't planning on testifying tonight, but having sat through the work session, I couldn't resist not coming down and chiming in a couple of comments. My concern, I think in what you saw on the housing needs analysis, goes back to the fact that it really seems to be no opportunity for public input before that housing needs analysis is finalized. And it seems the response there was the opportunity will exist for public input once we get to the policy implementation stage. My concern is if we haven't got the ability to help shape that housing needs analysis, we've got everything backwards. And I got a copy of the draft. I've actually gone through it and so, I've got some real concerns about some of the assumptions. A couple of examples. The first of all is that the study, as it talked about, says that over the next 20 years, 65% of the housing we leave will be single-family and 35% will be multifamily. But, if you look at what our housing mix is now, I think we're at 71% single-family and 29% multifamily. And if you look at the last 10 years of development trends, it's actually weighted even more to single-family. It's been, I think, 74% single-family, 26% multifamily. And thinking about why they're making that switch and saying now it's going to be 65% single-family, a lot of it seemed to go back to demographic issues and house price issues. But, in the housing needs analysis draft, the data in there goes back to 2008. And so, if we're using house prices from 2008, those are vastly inflated. Those numbers have come down quite a bit. And so, one would think that's going to probably diminish the need for much more multifamily land in the future. And again, that's the thing, there's been no opportunity to provide that kind of input. Another concern I've got is some of the redevelopment assumptions. And in that study, it makes the assumption that large tracts, frankly, not even large tracts, tracts of residential land over half an acre can be redeveloped and will be redeveloped. And in the map that you look at, the entire large acreage area of Ilihee, a lot of the stuff off Greys Hill Road in West Salem, stuff off Viewcrest, it's saying all of those lots over half an acre will be redeveloped to meet our housing needs. And I think we all know that's not going to happen. There's no way it's going to happen. So, the assumptions are wrong. And so, my point is, I'm just troubled by the lack of opportunity for input. And if the council has the ability in working with the COG to make sure that happens prior to the housing needs analysis being adopted, I think you'd have a much better work product at the end and the policies that will come from those assumptions would be a lot better later on down the road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Erdman? Yes, Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mike, thanks for your comments. How soon do you think groups who may have interest in this, such as yours, obviously, could prepare some documents for a subcommittee or a task force like what Counselor Clausen was talking about to take a look at and incorporating? I think we're at 71% single-family and 29% multifamily. And if you look at the last 10 years of development trends, it's actually weighted even more to single-family. It's been, I think, 74% single-family, 26% multifamily. And thinking about why they're making that switch and saying now it's going to be 65% single-family, a lot of it seemed to go back to demographic issues and house price issues. But in the housing needs analysis draft, the data in there goes back to 2008. And so if we're using house prices from 2008, those are vastly inflated. Those numbers have come down quite a bit. And so one would think that's going to probably diminish the need for much more multifamily land in the future. And again, that's the thing. There's been no opportunity to provide that kind of input. Another concern I've got is some of the redevelopment assumptions. And in that study, it makes the assumption that large tracts, frankly, not even large tracts, tracts of residential land over half an acre can be redeveloped and will be redeveloped. And in the map that you look at, the entire large acreage area of Ilihee, a lot of the stuff off Greys Hill Road in West Salem, stuff off Viewcrest, it's saying all of those lots over half an acre will be redeveloped to meet our housing needs. And I think we all know that's not going to happen. There's no way it's going to happen. So the assumptions are wrong. And so my point is I'm just troubled by the lack of opportunity for input. And if the council has the ability, in working with the COG, to make sure that happens prior to the housing needs analysis being adopted, I think you'd have a much better work product at the end, and the policies that will come from those assumptions would be a lot better later on down the road.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Erdman? Yes, Councilor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mike, thanks for your comments. How soon do you think groups who may have interest in this, such as yours, obviously, could prepare some documents for a subcommittee or a task force like what Councilor Clausen was talking about to take a look at and incorporating in this study?
Yeah, I know our group could be ready pretty quick, because I actually got a copy of the draft some time ago, and I've been looking at it. Other groups probably have not had a chance to review the draft, and so they may take a little longer, but we could be ready pretty quickly to provide comments.
And the question is, why is the 6 June mandate sort of a mandate? Is that some drop-dead date? Do we need to rush this thing, is the question?
Mrs. Woods can respond to that.
We have no obligation to adopt a local housing needs analysis here in Salem. The regional housing needs analysis is not adopted. And so it's a report that's being prepared by these consultants at the direction of the Council of Governments and funded by DLCD. So that study will be completed at the end of the month. But from there on, so what we do with the results that come out of that study is up to us, and the timing is related to our choice.
I believe, Councilor Clem, that the June 6 date that we were referring to is our council work session on the report that has to do with industrial land. But it really all is relevant one to the other.
And if I may be so bold to speak for Mr. Erdman, I think his concern is that some of this will get into this report that's coming out on May 31. And those kind of public comments that he's referring to won't get incorporated into that. And that's true. The way that this is set up, that will occur in that mode. But it won't, either will it be adopted by any official body.
Okay. Counselor Cannon.
Thank you. I want to follow up on what you just said. Then what is the purpose of the report if it hasn't had public input and vetting of the issues, as suggested by Mr. Erdman?
It provides a basis for the communities to start working from in order to adopt local analysis.
Okay. Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. But didn't I understand, Vicki, that what you end up with is sort of the statistic, the fact base for the policy decisions? This becomes something that is essentially backing up everyone's activity around this, and that DLCD will use it as part of its find, I don't know what the terms would be, kind of its findings that would either justify or not justify our decisions as policymakers?
Well, it really started at the bequest of the city of Kaiser, who's anxious to move forward with expanding their UGB and is in the middle of periodic reviews. So they are mandated to do this. And what this study is intended to do is it's intended to provide a basis that is defendable at the state level, so that if Kaiser goes forward, the UGB gets expanded, there's a basis of study that meets the state requirements and is defendable. But there are other ways to go about doing it, and we have the choice when we adopt our local housing, if we choose to adopt a local housing needs analysis, to go back and look at the assumptions. So what you have is a set of assumptions. So it says, here are the five things we assumed. We assume that lots this big could be redeveloped, but lots this big can't be redeveloped. And here's what we are projecting for the growth. So we know what the growth is for the UGB as a whole, but we don't know what it is divided. But they've assumed a number. So we could go back and change those assumptions upon which the results are based. But they're documented what the assumptions are.
Well, just to share my concern, not to ask for any answer to it right now, but we have a joint UGB with Kaiser. So if they have a set of assumptions and facts, and we have a set of assumptions and facts, which is what it feels like we're heading toward, there's going to be a certain built-in conflict when we try to develop a joint urban growth boundary adjustment proposal, it would seem like. And that just concerns me. Not you need to resolve it, but I hear it sounds like we're just setting up potential conflict unless there is some sort of agreed-upon base that we're working with.
Well, and I think that's why we were going to meet together as the city of Salem on June the 6th to begin having that discussion. And you had an initial discussion with Kaiser around the economic opportunities now. So you're right. We have to come together and decide how we're going to go forward, and that path is not very clear. And no matter which route we choose, we may not have a clear answer as to how we resolve it.
Counselor Clausen.
I think I wanted to follow up a little bit on Counselor Bennett's concern there. I don't need the answer right now, but I'm curious why Kaiser's in such a hurry. I don't understand that there's any deadline that they have to do this by. And I'm curious that we're doing a study that the description you just gave is to give Kaiser a basis for an expansion. And that should not be the reason for a study. The reason for a study should be to get the facts straight. I don't see how we can get a study with the facts straight if there's no opportunity for public review and comment before the report comes out that's going to be the basis for people to talk about expansions. And I don't want to be rushed into talking about expansion of our common UGB based off a study that's hurried, that isn't, potentially isn't 100% thorough. And with us being a member of the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments and a large member at that, maybe we need to just say, hold on, let's make sure we get this right and make sure it's really, really complete.
I probably mischaracterized, because I don't mean to say. I think that the reason that Kaiser is moving forward is they're in periodic review. They entered into periodic review because they had a sense that their land supply was constrained. And so they've entered into periodic review. I don't think there was a prejudgment of what the outcome would be, but that's why the study is going on, is because they're in periodic review. You're right, we are a member of the Council of Governments. This study is paid for by the state. And so if we want to continue it or augment it, we probably would have to come up with some funding to pay for the continued analysis that would need to occur. But again, we have the, we will have to adopt a local version of it before we sanction it. And so that has not occurred yet and isn't really on our list at this point in time. I think Kaiser does have a sense of urgency here because they feel constrained. But we'll have to figure out what our response is to that as a community. And I agree. We don't want to adopt something that's incorrect or hurried or not well thought through.
I'd just like to jump in for a second and say that we do have a council goal session on May 16, and perhaps that would be an opportunity for us to further discuss this and make some decisions. Counselor Clem, you had your hand up a moment ago.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I'm not sure the goal-setting session will give us the time to get into all the nuances. This study's been going on for a year and a half.
This one, less than that, but probably a year, nine months.
Yeah, I remember sitting in for the mayor almost a year ago, and it was ongoing then. So I think the point that Counselor Clausen brings up and Counselor Bennett bring up are good ones. I think the point is that would we be, could we have a public hearing associated to anything that we do with regard to this on June 6? Is that a work session or a public hearing?
That's a work session. You know, I'm thinking, you won't have time to get into all the details of this at the council goal session, but I think at that meeting, you maybe can schedule a meeting to decide how you're going to work on this further.
I'd push for a public hearing, and then our input would include public testimony. We can't control what the state does or what Kaiser does. I will tell you that there are so many nuances here between Kaiser and Salem's struggle for the UGB. We should go slow and be very thoughtful about assuming anything that Kaiser wants to do. They've been, they see themselves as just stacked to the walls, and they do need to expand, I think. But I think we need to have a public hearing before we weigh in on any of this officially.
And just as a reminder to council, we have a second meeting, regional kind of meeting, to discuss some of these topics that we committed to in July.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. No further questions for Mr. Erdman. Sorry to have held you up there at the podium so long. Thank you so much for coming this evening and for sharing your thoughts and observations with us. And I'm sure that we'll be talking further. Good. Thank you very much. Okay. The next person on our list, Ross Schwarzenbruber, is here. And please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Ross Schwarzenbruber, 335 Grove Street, representing the Salem Creative Network. And I'm here tonight in support of extending the EID period for application. And what we, our group has been approached by property owners who have seen that other groups have failed to apply for this and are interested in seeing if there's a community response downtown for maintaining an EID. And as you know, EIDs do take a while to establish, but there are some very good examples of success in McMinnville, Silberton, Albany, and Corvallis. And I really think that Salem can pull together and have a great example of an EID downtown. And to that end, we're holding a summit on May 17, 6:30, at the library that's open to anyone in or outside of downtown. And just want to say that we really appreciate the movement for the staff that's behind this. And I think that our organization is in support of an EID. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schwarzenbruber. Are there questions? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming this evening. And the third person on our list of speakers is, and I apologize, if it's Maiden or Hayden Muse?
That was the young man who spoke earlier, so he must have signed up on that sheet.
Oh, he signed up on this sheet. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Give you that one. Okay. Our next order of business is the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, would you make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I move the consent calendar with additions and the following polls. 4.2A by Counselor Dickey. 4.2C by Counselor Nanki.
4.2C, you said?
3C. I'm sorry. 3C. I'm sorry.
4.3C. And Counselor Nanki, was that right?
Nanki, yep. 4.3G by Counselor Dickey. And 4.3H, Counselor Cannon would like to register a no vote.
All right. All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 4.2A, 4.3C, 4.3G, and note the no vote cast by Counselor Cannon on 4.3H. Okay, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We'll now go to special orders of business for the polled items. And Counselor Dickey, would you like to speak to 4.2A?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is, I think, for Director Fernandez regarding the, I'm studying the recreation fees for Public Works. I just had a question about, I know softball, oh, I'm sorry. I will move staff recommendation.
Second.
Thanks. Yeah, my question is, I understand softball's a little different than some of the other programs that we have. But I'm just curious, the fees that we charge for our recreation programs, like the tennis camps and that kind of thing, and any fee waivers that we might give out, do we charge the same regardless if someone lives within the city limits or outside of the city limits?
Counselor Dickey, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. The waivers are only available for city of Salem residents. But in terms of the other sports, I'm going to let Mark Beckel address that. Or Becky George.
Mark Beckel, Parks and Transportation Services Manager. The fees are all the same regardless of the participants, where they live. It's, as the director said, the waivers are only available if you're a resident of Salem.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Dickey.
I'd like to follow up. Can you tell me why the fees are the same? I mean, the library, we don't charge the same for people who are inside the city limits versus outside. Is it just, is it administratively cost prohibitive to do that, or some other reason why?
No, Counselor. What we're moving to in the recreation arena in these camps is to a self-sustaining model. So that, in fact, we're already in recreation to the point where there is no general fund support of the program. There's general fund support for the four staff that work in recreation, but the programs are all self-sustaining. So I think we want to be in a situation where we can just sell as much of this service as possible. So we don't want to give away the service. You know, so in a waiver situation, we want only citizens to participate in that. But in terms of the recreation itself, it's a fee-for-service. It fully covers all of the costs. So we really, at that point, welcome everyone to participate at the fee-for-service.
All right. Now, Counselor Dickey moved, and I believe Counselor Nanki seconded the motion. Am I right? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. No vote by Counselor Cannon. Motion passes. Okay. Counselor Nanki, would you like to address item 4.3C?
It's 7:30, Madam Mayor. We should probably move to public hearing and come back to those final elements that have been polled. For our rules.
I thought we were doing that under the... Ew, pardon me. All right. Okay, we will move to public hearings. Public hearing regarding the 2011-12 Housing and Community Development Action Plan is now open. Will the recorder please introduce that?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on the 2011-2012 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Welch will make the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, Andy Welch, Housing and Social Services Manager. Could I breach protocol for one moment?
Certainly.
A member of the Housing and Urban Development Advisory Committee, Ms. Maria Palacio, she was here. She didn't get signed up on the sheet. She has a few things that she'd like to say. Would it be appropriate for her to go before me, or would you prefer after?
Is it on this report?
It is on this report.
So after you do the presentation, during the public hearing part?
Certainly. That would be fine if you'd like to bring her to the podium.
I think during the public hearing after the presentation would be the right.
Oh, all right. I'm getting conflicting news here. Okay, all right. All right. Is she present?
Yes, she is.
Oh, yes, Maria. Why don't we just go ahead and do that right now so that she can speak and we'll keep all this going together?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and all of you present. I am Maria Palacio, and I am just the passport of the Housing and Urban Development Committee, a group of citizens that take their job very, very seriously. And our job is to award funding through all the wonderful projects from the city that come to apply for these funds. And these funds are given based on homelessness, economic development, affordable housing, and community development. And let me tell you that we have a lot of wonderful organizations that apply for these funds. This year, we awarded 11, to 11 projects from the Community Development Building Grants. And we awarded to six programs from what is called HOM. But the big thing for us this year, the very difficult thing, was that the budget was cut significantly. From the CDDG, we cut, not we, the federal government cut 16.5%, which was very significant. And from the HOM, 12%. So it was heartbreaking for all of us to be able to look at all the projects and say, who are we going to cut, who are not, we are not going to award, because all of them were wonderful, excellent programs. So we did the best that we could. We gave... We gave them as much as we could. There was not a single one who did not get something. But we just wanted you to know that these are difficult times. I don't have to tell you again, you know, but that we are all feeling it and we are all doing the same, and we thank you for the support that you are giving us and that all of the personnel in the Housing and Urban Development, Housing Authority, and all of us are here supporting you and doing what's best for our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Palacio. We appreciate you coming this evening, appreciate your testimony. Let's move back to the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andy Welch, Housing and Social Services. A really brief PowerPoint, a few pictures, and then happy to go from there with you. The 2011-2012 Annual Action Plan. The action plan is an annual plan that sets forth the strategies and focus of the city's expenditure in targeting of community development block grant and home funds. There we go. This annual plan implements the 2009-2013 Consolidated Plan, which set priorities, the council adopted that, set the priorities of ending homelessness, promoting economic development, providing affordable housing, and revitalizing low-income neighborhoods. This plan, the annual plan, is predicated on three different planning documents. Tenure Planned End Homelessness, the Continuum of Care Plan, and the Consolidated Plan. Each three of those add value to this plan and support the four areas of priorities that I mentioned. This year, in proposed projects, there are single-family homes, multifamily, a whole series of different types of projects, interim housing, security deposit, from soup to nuts. Housing, community development, homeless, at-risk populations. This is a fairly typical list that the city has funded over the years with community development block grant and home funds. This year, of course, there is less money, as Ms. Palacio mentioned, 1.313 million in CDBG, 863,000 in home funds. The city participates jointly with the City of Kaiser in the home funds. The CDBG funds are solely for the city. Last year, and in a few years past, some of the projects that the city funded with community development block grant and home funds. Marion Polk Food Share Community Kitchen. Mr. Hayes mentioned the upcoming project that is contemplated in this annual plan, which is the repackaging facility. This was their commercial kitchen where they were able to prepare in a much more efficient way the meals that they transport to various sites throughout the city to serve what is estimated at 148,000 individuals every year. I can attest to that being unduplicated, but 148,000 meals every year. Upper right, West Salem Clinic. The city invested in West Salem Clinic three years ago for a project that was completed the summer of 2010, I believe. Phenomenal facility that provides much-needed medical care and access for individuals that don't have the means to track that health care in the marketplace. And finally, the bottom right, Woodmansey Apartments down on Sunnyside Road, just south of the intersection of Sunnyside Road and Commercial Street. It is a project that is a fostering-out project that serves a particularly vulnerable population, and it is a wonderful project that is, I think, a mirror of many of the wonderful projects that are on the plan for this year. The objectives for this year's funding to assist will be, and these objectives are really outcomes. The language HUD uses is a little different, but these are outcomes of the investments from the city. We'll assist 312 homeless or at-risk homeless individuals with rental assistance, meet the needs of 2,197 individuals who are at risk of homelessness with social service needs, acquire and rehabilitate 160, I'm sorry, 186 low-income multifamily units, provide 21 low- and moderate-income households with home rehabilitation loans, provide 355 northeast neighborhood residents with additional safety lighting. This is kind of an anomaly, I think, to the historic investments, but it's a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, NRSA, called a NERSA. And it's a particular geographic area in the city, and the city adopted this Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, I think, three years ago. And this NERSA area is an area where funds that would ordinarily have much more substantial kinds of constraints on them, then if you bring those monies into this area, you can actually be more flexible with the federal HUD funds. And so we had an application for safety lighting to light certain areas that the community felt were risk factors and so, but it is somewhat of anomaly. And finally, assisting 74 entrepreneurs in micro enterprise training, which is helping fledgling entrepreneurs who want to start their own small business to gain business training and business planning activities. I included the general fund priorities here, not because this plan doesn't control the general funds. You will approve the allocation of general funds in your budget later in the spring, but the general fund priorities, it was important to show how they dovetail with the housing and community development, the CDBG and the home funds, because really, they work together. And so, general fund priorities for this year, emergency housing and shelter, food, emergency services, utility rents, crisis referrals, intervention. The projects that are built into your budget, draft budget, as recommended by the Social Service Advisory Board to you, the commission, in that budget document. Mono a mono rental assistance for 3,500 individuals, the 148,000 individuals that Marion Polk is proposing to serve, crisis hotline for 18,500 individuals, extremely important services, youth homeless shelter to help 120 youth, and of course, the youth center to provide some active place for youth to go and be amongst their peers, 600 homeless youth with case management and other assistance. The social service programs are, as I mentioned, recommended to you. There's a lot of overlap between the two different committees, the Housing and Urban Development Action Committee and the Social Service Committee. Both are managed by the Urban Development Department. And finally, for this plan tonight, City Council, this plan is, needs to be to HUD by the 15th of May. And so what we're requesting is that City Council approve the plan so the plan can be submitted to HUD. And then, of course, we continue the partnership meetings with all of the parties that have submitted applications and that are working with us to put these various community benefits in place.
Thank you very much. We have one other individual who signed up to speak during this public hearing, and then we will go back to staff for questions. Stephen Miller, are you in the audience?
I am.
Please come to the podium. Introduce yourself, your name and your address, please, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, administration, and residents. I'm Steve Miller, the Director of Housing for Catholic Services Housing and Development, 3850 Portland Road. And I'm here to acknowledge the support that you've given us over the last four years. And I'd like to tell you that your support has helped people's dreams become reality. There's kids who have been bouncing out in foster care. They might have bounced, some of them have bounced 17 times and they're only 13 years old, and now they've finally got their own bedroom. And they have that until they graduate from high school, and then when they graduate from high school, we've got the Center Court Commons. It's the old Saint, Saint, it's the old, the nursing home on Center Street that was converted. And I'd like to let you know how effective your support has been. And we've received tremendous support from the city, and it's really a privilege to work with us, such a fine city and administration, because we've gotten technical and business support from urban renewal, and we get lots of support from building and the planning departments. They really help us a lot. They nurture us along, so. And I handed out our Bishop's Circle. We, I'd like to show how your support is like seed money for us. The first project was Woodmansey South. That was, we just completed that. We got $200,000 from the 2009-2010 annual contribution there, and we leveraged that into $450,000 from private foundations. This year, we just were breaking ground on State Street, right behind the United Methodist Retirement Center, and the city gave us generously $300,000. And we've leveraged that, we've leveraged your money to, we've gotten $900,000 of grants from foundations, and, well, we got $450,000 from Salem Foundation, $75,000 from the Collins Foundation, and about $400,000 from United Methodist. So your money is, we're using your, we're not just coming to you only. We're coming to you in the beginning, and you're helping us get the ball rolling. So it's very effective. I see my lights blinking.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors? Yes, Counselor Clem?
Yes, Mr. Miller. Again, thanks for coming down and being passionate about this. Did you have any other comments that you didn't get a chance to share with us?
Yes, I was just going to say, last time I was here, I think, Councilman Clem, well, maybe it was Councilman Cannon, asked me how many more of these we needed to build. Well, I want to report back that we opened Woodmansey in January 15th, and by January 20th, they were all rented, and we have a waiting list. So we're trying to build very high-quality, affordable housing, and there's a real need for it in the city. And I'd like to also add that we really need multifamily lots in the city. As, from a person that scours the city for lots, it's really hard for me to find this proj, it was hard for me to find this project, and next year, I'm going to have to work really hard. So there's a dearth. We need more multifamily lots, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I really applaud what you were able to do at Woodmansey. I was out there and toured, and it's a fine addition to the community. Thank you for working so hard on that. Laura, Counselor Tesler, yes, thank you.
I just thought of an excellent location for you. How about at the corner of Mission and Liberty?
Got several acres.
That would be, it's a historic district overlay, but I saw what you had done with Woodmansey, and I was very, very, very impressed with the quality and what was done there. I will tell you, as someone who has had experience with looking for assisted living facilities and looking at them for future, for someone in my family, you don't find nice places too much. And we were very, very impressed with the quality of the place, the way it was built so that people can still have some semblance of privacy, yet, you know, have that feeling that there's people around that can help. It wasn't your typical group home, or it smells like icky, overcooked food, and it's not real clean and that kind of thing. It was, what you do in this community, you should be highly commended for. I'm very, very happy that you're in this community, and I'm very, very happy to help you build many more assisted living facilities because we do need them so desperately in this community. I do agree with you. Do look at that lot. It's a very nice lot. It does have a historic district overlay, and I'm sure the planning people can fill you in on that. But that would be, I would love to have another one of you in board, too.
Okay. I'd love to be there.
Yeah.
Okay. And thank you again for all your support. And I mean it. I've worked in three different states and quite a few cities, and there's something special about the way this city comes together and supports nonprofits and just supports people, so thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. All right. Now, are there questions for Mr. Welch? Because we wanted to go back to the staff person for this before we move on. Now, questions? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Andy, I'm looking at page 33 of your action plan, and I'm just going to read you a couple of lines because it made me think about what we were talking about earlier in terms of the need for housing and some of the folks that are going to be wanting single-family housing. And it's just quote from it, "Data from the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act indicates there was unequal lending on the basis of ethnicity and race in Salem." And I found that just sort of basically troubling, and particularly if we're going to be dealing in the future with this. And I hope part of the action plan is to get together with the lending community and help them through this difficult period they appear to be passing through. The other is, "Other housing industry practices such as high cost of rental application fees, security deposits, and system development charges affect housing in the city." So I don't quite understand what exactly the action plan advises with these. These have a feeling of a systemic problem, and I'm just curious how you deal with those.
Really good question. Thank you. The, this section, HUD asks us to identify impediments to fair housing, and we do that with the Fair Housing Council, who the city contracts some $12,000 annually to do a series of trainings and analysis for us. And the city had an Impediments to Fair Housing study done, I believe, two and a half years ago, and out of that came these elements that you cite. And so, they are problems that need a solution. The one, the last thing that you read, which was high-cost rental application fees, security deposits, system development charges, barriers to people getting into housing. We're trying to address those barriers. Actually, you, the city, are addressing those barriers as you fund security deposits and other rental assistance, short-term assistance for folks to get into the housing, stabilize. But you're absolutely right. These are barriers, and they continue to be barriers for a lot of the population. You might have noticed, putting on a different hat in the Housing Authority report, I mentioned that the security deposits was one of the barriers to our veterans program. And so, once again, the city's hoping, and we hope, to fund security deposits so we can address that issue, too. But certainly not enough money. It certainly doesn't address the broader market kinds of impacts.
Thank you. Are there other questions? All right.
Yes, I do.
Oh, yes. Counselor Cannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up on what you just said in the answer to Counselor Bennett's question. Do you know of any cities which regulate the fees that are charged for rental applications?
Off the top of my head, no. I couldn't tell you a city, but I know that there are programs out there whereby if public dollars are used to facilitate the development of a project, then there could be public controls on the level of fees and the level of fees that are charged for access for a client. In the private market, I'm not aware of any constraints.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now close the public hearing. Counselor Bennett, oh, I'm sorry. And we now go to deliberations on this report. Counselor Cannon?
In the, in the concept of being, I think I have to abstain. I was on the Catholic Community Services Board during the period of time that many of these applications were made to the city. So I think in the abundance of caution, I've got to recuse myself.
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Tesler to accept staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now going to go back to special orders of business to resume where we were on the consent calendar polls, and my notes say that we're at 4.3C. Counselor Nanki, would you like to make a motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll begin with staff recommendation.
Second.
Just in looking and reading this staff report, it just felt funny. And so I had a couple of questions, first being, there's an asterisk next to it, but I didn't see any deadline for the grant application to be in. Is that actually the case?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor, there is a deadline. It's May 27th.
Then dealing with the content thereof, it... Then, dealing with the content thereof, it, my issues come down to, one, we say that a majority of our solid waste from that area is food-soiled disposable paper products, that we in fact supply the disposable paper products for, for employees to soil. And to get around that, we want to take money from the county, which is taxpayer money coming back to a taxpayer-funded organization, which is the city, to actually buy silverware and flatware that's washable in our own dishwasher, when we could just tell people, one, stop providing them disposable paper products, and thus force them to bring in their own flatware and silverware, like I do, and take home and wash with, with my other things. So, it really kind of bothers me in that respect. And then that we're throwing away something that's food-soiled disposable paper products, which can be composted, and the city could speak with Marion County Solid Waste to actually get receptacles to take that and get it out of the standard waste stream and composted, rather than not knowing how many people are trying to apply for grants, rather than going to a public body.
Yeah. Councilor, we are go, we're in the process of getting Earthwise certified, having the Civic Center Earthwise certified, we already have Willow Lake, treatment, the offices there, and the, and the, the fire stations, I think the library's all certified. So, Civic Center's kind of the last piece that we want to get certified. As part of the certification process, it was actually the Marion County staff said, hey, we have this grant program, and we think you guys would be a great thing to fund. So they invited us to apply for this grant, so that they can use us as a showpiece for, for doing these things. So that's why, that's why we're applying. With respect to the composting aspects, we are actually, there was gonna be a companion staff report, we're not quite ready yet to actually move to composting and having a, you know, having some of these products that are food-soiled move to, to compost facilities. That's not quite ready yet, so that's coming at, at a later time. With respect to soil dishes, there are numerous meetings where the food is provided for guests.
We're councilors.
Like, like councilors. So therefore, you know, if we were, you know, I guess the plates could be provided by, you know, we don't know if, if the, if the folks downstairs would provide plates, but if, but if we provide that, then we could go ahead and take care of those. So it's really something that, that, that we would like to do. We're moving forward with installing some of these facilities anyway, as part of our remodel situation up there. Marion County, through this program, is offering to defray the cost through a grant. That's why we're applying. That's, I mean, it's really that simple.
Councilor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the staff report, I believe, shows that the $17,000 grant we're applying for from Marion County is, is really associated with the dishwasher and the plumbing. So whether you take your plates home, or you clean them here, I think it provides for more sanitary conditions where, where the public often meets in that room as well. So, it's in relation, it's in addition to the $50,000 budgeted to, to do a remodel of those public meeting areas, as it is anyway. So, I think it's, I think it's good that the county was willing to give the city money.
Okay. I believe there's a motion on the floor. Yes, Councilor Nanki?
Just one other thing that bothered me, to throw it out on the floor as well, in the respect that, you know, it was that, you know, it really won't cost anything, except for the energy and the soap to go into that unit. But again, the water, we're not charging ourselves for, which the taxpayers are paying for to help wash employees' dishes. So, that's kind of the other, it was like...
If it helps any with that, is, we frequently will have a lunch or some type of reception when we have visitors coming from Japan, or sister city groups, or businesses that are thinking about locating in Salem. And we want to use actual plates instead of paper products for those. And at the current time, employees take the soil dishes to their homes, to their own dishwashers, wash and bring them back. So, this dishwasher is more than just for employees, and we can use it throughout the Civic Center complex. We haven't installed that kind of plumbing throughout the building, and think it would be very helpful in a number of ways to have this available.
Okay. Yes, Councilor Nanki?
Follow-up in that regard, then, because the staff report in and of itself kind of indicated it would just be for the Public Works Office area. And if it's not, is that the most logical place to put that kind of a utensil?
Because of the two large meeting rooms we have on the third floor, we believe it is. The 305 and 325 meeting rooms.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, I believe.
Can you give a second, yeah?
Yeah.
It was moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by, was it?
I'll second it.
You seconded. All right, moved, all right, yeah. Moved by Councilor Nanki and seconded by Councilor Clausen to accept the staff report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries with Councilor Nanki voting no.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just clarification?
Yes.
To accept the staff report, to accept the staff recommendation?
Oh, thank you. All right. Yes. All right. We'll now move, move to Counselor Dickey. Would you please make a motion regarding, or speak to the poll that you have on item
Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Yeah, I, I actually have several questions about this. But basically, we have seen bits and pieces of the EID in various forms over the last several months, and this is just another piece in this puzzle. And, and I'm kind of grasping to get the larger picture of, of this whole thing. And, you know, and now I see, you know, we, we did the RFP, we didn't get any takers on it, which, that concerns me, and I'm, but my, I guess my basic question is, a couple questions. The, the timeline of this, if, you know, we go out for another RFP, and there is that gap, you do kind of indicate in the staff report, but could you explain what's gonna happen in that gap between the time the funding would end, and you would hire an administrator? I'm, I'm kind of struggling with how that all works together.
So, Shree Wargandyan, Downtown Rehabilitation Manager. So, if I understand your question correctly, you're wondering what would happen between July 1st and if we were successful October? And it's my understanding, from a meeting that I was in recently with City Manager Linda Norris, we have a couple of things that we could do. One would be, we have in your budget, that's before you, in the parking fund, $100,000. That's for contractual services. And it could be that, depending on what the needs are, one of the things could be, you know, the continuance of maintaining the, some cleanliness, or cleaning of the garbage can lid, some of the things that's being provided now, we could continue to do those services. Or another thing we could think about would be having those funds available to add to the funding that would be coming through with the levy, so that whoever the organization was that was successful as the EID administrator, they would have those additional funds, or the net of what we might use during that interim and the levy.
All right, Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. That helps. And, and the RFP, did it, who, who did it go out to? Is, is it open to anyone? Does it have to be someone who's a stakeholder in the EID to administrate it?
It was open to anyone.
Okay.
Certainly those organizations that we have heard from were contacted by me personally, and were informed that it was available. And I also went back to that original group that Counselor Tesler had recommended when we were discussing the Downtown Welcome Center, and I went back and included Travel Salem and the Chamber, and, and broadened it, but it was certainly available to anyone.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Dickey?
My final, my final things, when, should we go out for the RFP again, when we get it? Hopefully, we will get that submission guidance document, is what you're calling it. I, it would be great to be able to see that, the, and the wording on that. And then when the RFP comes back, I'm assuming we will get to look at it in detail before we would make that approval.
Yes, Counselor Dickey, and I do have just a copy, and we'll get this out to council to remind you, it's been a while since you've looked at it. It is open to anyone, but it, it, they have to have a board with no less than 50% of the voting members on the board being real property owners within the EID. You probably remember that discussion. So there was some discussion called out in this document, and we'll get that to you. And you may want to take a look at it and see if you still agree with the criteria.
I think that's a good idea. Okay. Let's see, Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Cannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I move the council appoint, that a council subcommittee appointed by the mayor be approved to review the EID and the criteria for the administrator, and return to the council with recommendations.
Second.
Mayor, I, I think Counselor Dickey raises a whole series of interesting questions, and we talked about it yesterday evening as well, and, and just brought up, I thought, a, a number of issues that I think a council subcommittee would have an opportunity to explore with staff, as well as giving councilors an opportunity to, to really get clear on this again. We, we've been through three years, we now have, of experience. We now have experience, there clearly was no wild interest in application for this. We have some time to take a look at the issue, take another look at kind of what the whole thing is about. It represents a tax, it's another property tax, albeit approved by those being taxed, but it's one that I think we can take a little time with, and a council subcommittee can maybe flush some of the issues out, along with the staff.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, and where are we next? Do we go to other councilors' comments, or do we deal with that motion first?
Yeah, well, there's a substitute motion on the floor, so until debate's closed on the substitute motion, that's where you are.
All right.
So, if there's anybody else...
I believe Counselor Cannon had his hand up, and Counselor Clausen.
I'm very supportive of the comments that have been made by Counselor Bennett. I'm also concerned, and I've had conversations with at least three different groups downtown, there is no continuity in what the players downtown want to do.
Okay.
And so, I think the concept that is being proposed with the substitute motion is to take some baby steps, and I think that if we can get our arms around the people who are players downtown, and have them then arrive at a solution. I don't think that this body can provide that solution. I think it's the people who are downtown, the merchants, who have to provide the solution. So I think this is a way to encourage them to come forward. So I'm very much supportive of the, of the substitute motion.
Thank you. And Counselor Clausen?
I'm also supportive of that, of the motion. To Counselor Dickey's comment earlier, or the question for Shree, what happens between now and then? Just for my own clarity, Counselor Bennett said we have time, and what happens? Our contract with the current EID administrator runs up. Does the EID go away, and we're not collecting tax now? That tax increment anymore, until a new administrator's selected? And then, if so, how big of a role does council want to take in shepherding the downtown businesses to get someplace? I mean, I think it's important that we make sure it gets someplace, but how big of a role do we need to take in collecting a tax from them for their own benefit? I just, I don't want to step way too far into that.
I think that either staff or, or city manager would like to comment?
Yes. We've received the final assessment payment amount, and so, the EID ends in June 30th of this year. And there are some funds that are remaining that have, the Go Downtown Salem, the current administrator has still, they have some contracts in place. And so, we'll be looking at that, bringing a report back to council with our recommendations about the services that you may or may not want to go forward with over the summer and, and until another administrator's in place, or, you know, you, you may decide through this process that you don't want to move forward.
Okay.
The point of clarification, the district does not end, the assessment ends.
Yes, the assessment ends.
The district will be in place.
Right.
And the council can, in the future, the district is scheduled to sunset, I believe it's three years.
2014.
2014.
Yes.
Until that day, you can still make an assessment. So the district does not terminate.
Uh-huh. But we would not do another assessment until council's decided, until a proposer comes forward and requests that.
Okay, so just on a point of clarification, that, so we would not assess the tax, for the like of a better word, until a new administrator is selected?
That's the process that council has set up at this time.
Okay. And then, I guess, to my point, I was just thinking out in my head, I guess really the subcommittee would be the one who decides how far we want to wade in. So that actually makes a lot of sense.
Make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation to council. Yeah, I agree. Okay, I like it. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the motion as well, and I'm, I'm still, I'm hoping to hear from this, the council subcommittee, even as far as our recommendation that we collect no assessment and appoint no administrator. I, I'm not, I, I hope that's not out of the realm of consideration. So, if, if, if it's not, I'll, I'll support the motion, because I, I really think at the end of the day, maybe it didn't work, and nobody applied for the EID administrator, because the city is into it too much. I, I was here when we created it, and I know all the rationale that existed, but if nobody applies, maybe this council subcommittee could ferret out why no one applied. So, I'm open to the full range of what Counselor Dickey and Counselor Clausen have indicated.
All right, I believe we have a motion on the floor, made by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to, it was a substitute motion, to appoint a council subcommittee to review and make a recommendation to council regarding the EID process. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you. We now proceed to ordinances. There are no first readings of ordinances, so we, I'm sorry. Oh, I am, all right.
Information.
Right, all right. We're all trying to move along a little too quickly here. We will back up to the information reports. Would any of the councilors like to address the information reports? Those are items seven, A, B, and C. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull item 7B and make a motion for a public hearing.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Bennett to pull item 7B and move it to a public hearing. Is there discussion? Yes, Counselor Clem?
Yeah, this is a complicated issue, as this is a street that just came into the city, or was annexed into the city for a variety of reasons. And the neighbors showed up pretty strongly with some, what I thought were creative recommendations, but rather than get into the merits of it, I think there's enough public interest on the part of the folks that live there, and the neighborhood association, and the information from city staff that council needs to fully make this decision. So, commensurate with our, our procedures for allowing, encouraging public input, I would ask that we have a public hearing on the matter.
All right. Any further comments? It's been moved by Counselor, who made the motion? Counselor Clem, and seconded by Counselor Bennett to move item 7B to a public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Now we will move to ordinances. There are no first readings of ordinances. Will the recorder please read the title and roll call vote for second reading?
Engrossed Ordinance Bill Number 3710, relating to Noise and Event Sound Permits, Amending SRC Chapter 93, Amending and Remumbering SRC 93.005, 93.007, and 93.185, repealing sections of SRC Chapter 93 and adding new SRC Chapter 51. Councillor Bennett?
Aye.
Councillor Tesler?
Aye.
Councillor Nanki?
Aye.
Councillor Clausen?
Aye.
Councillor Dickey?
Aye.
Councillor Thomas?
Aye.
Councillor Cannon?
Aye.
Councillor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance Bill Number 1610, vacating a portion of Fisher Road Northeast, right-of-way north of Market Street Northeast. Councillor Bennett?
Aye.
Just wanted to point out that 1611?
I'm sorry, 1611.
About aye on it too.
Councillor Tesler?
Aye.
Councillor Nanki?
Aye.
Councillor Clausen?
Aye.
Councillor Dickey?
Aye.
Councillor Thomas?
Aye.
Councillor Cannon?
Aye.
Councillor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor? I'm sorry, Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
All right. Our last, or near our last items, public comment, and there are several people signed up. The first person signed up is Lori Davis. Mrs. Davis, would you please approach the podium, give your name and address, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Mayor, city councillors, Lori Davis, Davis Family Enterprise, 2320 Fairgrounds Road. And I'm here to give you an update and overview of our sign on Portland Road, and Peter Dane is going to pass pictures of the sign out to you and information. And I got, when he came to NSBA, and I heard he was a master gardener, I got him to help with the sign area. But I want to back up here to 1994. Mayor Archie Anderson Wyckoff had an article in the paper that there would be $5,000 available to the different points of Salem, east, west, north, and south, to put in a welcome to Salem sign. So I called him and asked him if I could put one in on Portland Road, and he said yes. So I got a committee together, including Bill Frye, and we, she got that $5,000 plus several other donations to, it came to over $10,000. Because we put in underground sprinklers and lights and many other amenities, and a nice sign. And then in 2003, well, I was trying to get volunteers or donations wherever I could, and I maintained it for several years. And in 2003, I got a donation from Confederate Tribes of the Salads for $1,500. So I had a new sign put in, and several other things. And then, and then when I found, Peter Dane was a master gardener, and I asked him to work with the sign, and he planted a lot of daffodils. Well, I'll back up a little bit. Dick Wasnell helped maintain it for a while, period of time, he had Russell's Landscape working on it. But Peter Dane planted daffodils, and he's cleaned up that area better than, it's been cleaned up for years. And so I'm going to have him tell you more about that. And Sarah McDonald was, and then after he has done all this, and he was looking for someone else to take it over, I got an email that Sunrise Rotary would like to take it over, and Sarah McDonald was here and she had to leave. But Peter, would you discuss?
Well, you can see from the picture, it adds some beauty to the neglected Northgate neighborhood. Oh, excuse me, my name's Peter Dane, I live at 923 First Street in Salem. And I'm Marion County Master Gardener and Master Recycler. And I'd like to thank the city Parks Department, especially Mr. Geis for donating the bark dust, and also Tony Martin for giving us back on information on the area. Although the property belongs to ODOT, the city has a right-of-way, and anyway, Sunrise Rotary Club is going to take over the maintenance of it, and it is a beautification project which I hope the city will encourage others to plant decorative gardens to brighten up the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Dane or for Mrs. Davis? Yes, councillor Dickey?
Yeah, thanks for coming down. I don't know which one of you can answer this, but, and I do appreciate the sign in our neighborhood, because I know that it's been there a long time, and a lot of the neighbors have appreciated when, you know, you've gone in and put the bark dust and the flowers and things in. My question is, if the Sunrise Rotary, they're interested in maintaining it, will they have a regular maintenance schedule? I mean, do we have a way to hold, to make sure that that will get maintained on a regular basis? If they do that, do you know?
Yes, they, they were granted a permit by ODOT, and I gave them a maintenance schedule and complete information and on the project. And I'm going to monitor it to make sure they follow through on the maintenance schedule. So anyway, we're optimistic about that it will be maintained, but it had been neglected for years, and it's a big improvement, and hopefully, some of the neighbors might call the Rotary Club to join and help with volunteering also.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. I have, councillor Bennett, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to thank Peter and Lori. This really is a vast improvement and just really looks beautiful. You've done a wonderful job, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, Mrs. Davis, Lori. Appreciate so much all that you've done over many years, really, to enhance the Northgate Way area and other parts of the community as well. Thank you, and thanks for coming tonight. Thank you for waiting until so late. Appreciate that. Okay, we have another person signed up to speak. Barb Marcus or Narcus? Is she still here? Apparently not, all right, okay. All right. The next item of business is new business, and councillor Clem, would you like to make a motion regarding a councillor's item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. The motion is as follows. I move that city council direct staff to amend the water and sewer utility bills to reflect the city's water and sewer utility franchise fee as soon as practical.
Is there discussion?
If I could speak to the motion?
Yes, uh-huh.
I'm aware, lately, folks have indicated an interest in transparency, and I think the city really tries to be transparent in all of its dealings, but I've learned today that some of these things can be just done administratively. So I would ask that city manager Norris speak to what they can provide, when and how, and if the motion's really necessary.
Yes, councillor Clem and I had an opportunity to speak, and we can do this administratively. Public Works has been looking at the process. It'll take, I think, two to three months to make the software changes and ensure that the calculations are correct. But we should have a timeframe for that fairly soon, and we can just take care of this.
Yeah, is the councillor's motion necessary then?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I think...
So are you withdrawing?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and withdraw my motion if the second...
All right, and the second is withdrawn, all right. I see no further business to come before the council, we are adjourned.